All right, at six o'clock, I call this meeting in Saginaw City Council order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, please be seated. Item number two is the invocation. For that, our friend Pastor Michael Orr. Welcome, sir.
Let's pray together. Righteous and loving Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for this wonderful Assembly of people who care so much for our city and our community here in Saginaw. I first of all pray for all of the City Council members, all of those who are over various departments and works here in Saginaw, that you would put a blessing on each of their families and their family members, keep them in good health, help them to be blessed and strong in all that they do and all that they find to do, Father, help them to be able to do it with all of their hearts. Father, I pray that as decisions are made today and every day in the city, that you would bless those efforts, that they would be fruitful, that good things would continue to happen for our city. I pray for all of our students and those who are teachers and faculty at our schools, that you would help everything to go well as they prepare to graduate, that you would keep everyone safe and healthy, that you would be with our young people's bright futures as they look towards the horizon and be able to do good things and make our community proud. Father, we thank you so much for all of those who work in various positions that brings them into harm's way each day, our firefighters, police department, all of those who work in medical positions. May you keep them safe, help them to continue to do the wonderful job that they do, and all of those who helped through the difficult storm that we had recently. Father, be with our community, help us to be able to get out of this COVID quickly and to be able to continue to have a decline of cases and those who are terribly sick and those who have passed away. Father, be with all those families who are still struggling from this illness and may you bless them and be with them. Again, be with this council as they make decisions, be with all of our residents, bless us and watch over us, Father, and guide us in all that we do. We ask you all these things in your holy son's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Item number three is audience participation. So if there's any item on the agenda you would like to speak about, please see the City Secretary, you will be able to speak. We can speak about any item that is listed on the agenda. So that's item three. I'd also like to welcome folks watching online. I hope there's somebody watching online. If you are, you have any questions, please let us know. Contact the City Manager. Also let us know about the audio and visual quality of the feed. I'm always interested to make sure we can be viewed online as well. We're going to call a bit of an audible here, so instead of going to item four, I'm going to call at 6:03. We're going into the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney. We will return.
Everybody back? All right, at 6:37, we've returned from executive session. Item four is consent agenda. I have had a request to remove item B, to discuss item B. So A is action regarding minutes of April 20th. C is action regarding engagement letter with McDonald Hopkins. I will entertain a motion for A and C only.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda items A and C as presented.
I'll second. Mr. Beasley, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. But those not, let the record reflect, we do have a forum. We have a full house tonight. Item B, action regarding approval for fund and funding of art and community projects. That Director of Community and Economic Development, Keith Reinhardt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, in probably the last year and a half, two years, we've worked with professional artists and amateur artists to do different art in the community. And most recently with a professional artist out of the Taylor area, Austin area, Adam Davenport. He's painted the two murals at what was the original fire station at now Northwest Plumbing, and also mural on each side, north and south side, and also at JR's Cafe, the original Green's Grocery. We had comments just talking with council in the past about some, our local history. You know, those are some of the facilities that we've had and even having Mr. Green, I guess, and his wife on the side of what was Green's Grocery, now JR's Cafe. But we have a mock-up of, I think Dolph has it on, he can put it up, one of our local famous people, Miss Angela Stanford, professional PGA, or LPGA golfer. That's a photo of her taken, I believe, at the, I can't think of the name of the...
Is that the President's Cup? Or what's, no, what's that one called?
I have my glasses on to read.
LPGA?
I'll find it. Avion Championship, after she won. She has a, she grew up in Saginaw, went to Boswell High, TCU High, and her parents just happened to work for the city of Saginaw for a few years. And this was an art mock-up of an idea for a mural at one of our storage, water storage tanks in South Willa Creek Park.
And this was, and I have to correct, this was Mary's idea, basically just to highlight this because it's such a cool thing, and Mary wanted to bring it up to everybody's attention. So you're right, Mary, thank you very much. You go ahead, please.
And then, of course, not only are we honoring one of our famous past residents, but helping also to beautify the city. So I think it's a good idea.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say, you know, the public art program has probably exceeded everybody's expectations. The mayor pro-ten told me, you know, we need more local Saginaw people represented, which, you know, Miss Stanford fits that bill. I will say, because I had to talk to somebody related to her patient, the only change to this knockup that you all have seen at her work is she sponsored her painting. It'll just be a white hat to the campus.
Okay.
We won't have a painting for it. If the people are painting, I'm sure, I'm not a golfer, I'm sure it's great stuff.
I offered to have my name put up there, and the agent said no.
Mary, yes?
And just for the benefit of the audience, these funds are already available in the beautification budget, and that money is made up of donations that our residents make when they pay their water bill. And just to put a plug in for that, first of all, you, it is voluntary. You can call the city and say, I would rather not donate to anything. But another thing you can do is you can raise that donation, and you can also request that your donation be given to certain departments. So, you know, there's a lot of flexibility there that maybe everybody isn't aware of.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilmember Copeland, any other questions? If not, entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve consent agenda about the art routine.
Okay. Mr. Beasley, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. All right, so also in executive session, we discussed an agreement, and I need a motion on that one. I think Mr. Beasley's going to make that motion.
Is that now?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I move that we approve the independent contracting technology service agreement that was discussed in executive session.
Okay. I have a second. Cindy, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Mr. Beasley. Moving forward, item number five, COVID vaccination update. Our buddy Joseph Lester. Welcome, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. Right. Thank you, citizens of Saginaw, Mr. Mayor, Council, city leadership. The University of North Texas Health and Science Center has administered 4,318 first doses, 2,613 second doses of the Pfizer vaccine, with a total of 6,931 vaccines administered thus far. That is today, or this morning's update, today's numbers are to be determined. As many of you all have seen on the news and other media outlets, the supply of vaccine has now surpassed demand. Demand has continued to dwindle despite the city's and UNT Health Science Center's community outreach efforts. COVID-19 vaccines are widely available with no wait. It has never been easier to get vaccinated. Due to this decrease in demand, UNT Health Science Center has advised me they will be starting to downsize the clinic starting tomorrow, May 5th. The downsize will continue this week into next week, with the last day of operation being Monday, May 17th. I'm looking at this clinic as a huge success. More often than not, we were vaccinating more individuals than the amount of appointments that were given to us. The clinic is run smoothly. Credit goes to the UNT Health Science Center staff, OptumServe staff, the Saginaw Police Department, Saginaw Public Works, the Saginaw Recreation Center's exceptional staff. I know it was not easy filtering all those phone calls, but I do appreciate the dedicated effort. A big thank you to the Saginaw Community Emergency Response Team, ORCERT, volunteers who definitely shined during this entire effort. I will identify those folks on a later date and ensure they are properly recognized. With all that being said, while the clinic is still active, it will remain nine to five. As a reminder, it is the Pfizer vaccine being utilized. The vaccine is available for individuals 16 and up. First and second doses will be administered. If you receive a first dose in this timeframe, the staff on site will direct you to the next steps to obtain your second dose. Walk-ins are still welcome. Appointments can be made as well on tarrantcountystrong.com. There are clinics in and around our city that can vaccinate those who wish to receive it as well once the clinic shuts down. Walgreens, 833 North Saginaw Boulevard, has appointments available. CVS Pharmacy, 7220 Blue Mountain Road, they also have appointments. Sabon Pharmacy, 1201 North Saginaw Boulevard. Walmart has appointments, 1401 North Saginaw Boulevard. Kroger, 4750 West Bailey-Boswell Road has appointments, and Kroger on 1653 Basswood Boulevard. And with that, I'll take questions.
Any questions for Joe?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Copeland.
Do we or will we be able to determine what percentage of Saginaw residents have been fully vaccinated?
They did offer me data today that where they, we can, it's going to be a little bit more specific, like demographics and different things. I will do a final report that I will present to all you all as well, once it's all said and done.
Other questions? Thank you, Joe. We appreciate your hard work. Thanks for moving this forward.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving forward, item number six, there is an action regarding establishing a 501(c)(3) Friends of Saginaw Animal Services and Animal Safety Corp. place. For that, Keith Reinhardt, Director of Community and Economic Development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council again. This is an exciting one, I think, for my department. I'm pretty close to the Animal Services Department, it kind of tugs at my heartstrings a little bit, and I'm very blessed, that's one of the mini hats that I get to wear. What we're bringing to you today is an opportunity for the department, in a way, to grow. The many animal services and animal shelters in Texas and around have a 501(c)(3), where they can accept donations, large donations also. Our library, just next door, has a 501(c)(3) of friends of the library, and what we're bringing to you is to do the same thing for our animal services. Some of the things that it does, and I'll give you some examples, is we've had, well, some of the things it does is immediately allows us to apply for grants that we weren't able to apply for before. The other thing that it helps us out with is, and this has actually happened twice, where we've had individuals who have wanted to donate a significant amount of money, like a half a million dollars, to Saginaw Animal Services, and because we weren't 501(c)(3), they couldn't do it. There was a, I can't remember if I attached it or not, in your paperwork, there was an article about a woman who wanted to donate money to Texarkana Animal Services, a million dollars, but they had a 501(c)(3), and they were able to take that. And the purposes of that is to help out with the shelter. The existing shelter that we have right now was built strictly off of donations, a lot of donations over time, back in 2006, and it was built for the population we had at that time. And Saginaw's growing. This is going to help, this could help out our Saginaw Animal Services and provide better space for those animals that are there. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Council questions? Oh, yes, Cindy.
What took you so long to ask?
I don't have a good answer for that. I'd like to pass it along to my attorney and let him, I'm just kidding. It was actually brought to us by staff, and we went through the researching, trying to find, we didn't want to recreate the wheel. We could, but we didn't want to. There's enough municipalities out there that have these, and we actually kind of based ours off of a municipality, and I guess they're, I guess they're in Denton County. And then brought it to our attorneys, and Brandon and his staff took a look at it and made changes suitable for Saginaw, and that's what we have for you. But it was brought to you by our staff.
Any other questions, folks? I will entertain a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the establishment of the 501(c)(3) Friends of Animals Corporation, something along those lines, and it's passed due.
Second? Valerie, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Excellent. Thank you, Keith. Good work.
Thank you all.
Item number seven, consideration action regarding approval of guaranteed maximum price amendment to the AIA document, et cetera, et cetera. For that, Assistant City Mayor Dolph Johnson and five chief... For that, Assistant City Mayor Dolph Johnson and Fire Chief Doug Spears. Are many of y'all mics working?
Our mic wasn't just set up, not working.
Okay. Okay. Hey, Chief?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. After many, many, many meetings, that's three meetings, a lot of meetings, hours and hours of plan and document reviews, and hundreds of phone and email conversations, all between city staff, BRWR, architects, and Steel Freeman, I'm both proud and relieved to be presenting to you the guaranteed maximum price for the construction services that will be provided by Steel Freeman. That guaranteed maximum price, or GMP, is $11,385,087. That's not the complete cost of the new fire station, but it is the construction part cost of the fire station. Back in September, we discussed a target or an estimated price of $450 per square foot. What you have before you represents a cost of $462 per square foot, so we're just slightly beyond that early estimate. I can, however, confidently say, we've been hyper-thorough on every detail, focused on the cost, taking advantage of every opportunity to control and reduce costs where we could, and still build a quality facility that meets our needs now and into the future. Keeping costs at the forefront, as we said we would do, I think I made that statement way back in September at the council meeting. We've reduced the overall square footage of the fire station. We accepted some value engineering and alternate materials. We've made some changes to the trims and finishes throughout the building, placed some desired options on the alternates to which some of those are not included in what's in front of you. Cost-saving measures were employed all through the process, not just here at the end, to get us here. That's an important point. We've been focused on the details, which should keep the cost down throughout the project for change orders. We've tried to eliminate those as we go forward. There's likely to be some, but paying attention to the details from the very beginning to now should eliminate those. It's my opinion that the GMP reflects some favorable and competitive pricing from contractors due to market conditions. That's kind of what we anticipated. Councilman Far even championed that. Even with some volatility in the market related to materials, there have been some steady and pretty substantial increases in steel and concrete, even electrical and plumbing, among other items. In some cases, there's some material shortages now and forecasted in the future, so that plays into the cost that we're, that we have now. We have some staff with us from Steel Freeman, Josh McCann, Scott DePaul, and James Hinton. If the council action is to not approve the document, it'll keep us on schedule for a June groundbreaking. Staff recommendation is to approve with one slight modification. When we get to the action, we can point that out, what that slight wording modification is. As Dolph mentioned, he plans to speak to the overall budget. Perhaps we let him do that, and then collectively, we can answer any questions that you have.
Dolph?
So, Mayor and Council, the Art and Food Program, this project is funded through our 2021 fifth-fifth combination on execution last year, and that was a one and a half million, I believe, to cover the 14.75 million for this small fire station. A 15.75 million, or 15.75 million for street design, probably is getting more work on designing streets and some construction and sidewalk maybe. So, we went into this project, mindset that every dollar we can save on this project could be applied to those other projects. As Doug mentioned, this is the largest component of this project, construction. Other costs, the fourth, the amazing thing, testing inspection, we've got furniture appliances, maybe security radio equipment, local things, the Go Mini Station. Those are things that we've taken on the staff, and are handling them through either state or local contract in order to control costs. So, as the construction ability goes forward, we'll be bringing in additional contracts to approve for these other items that I just mentioned. Our current estimate, total, including all, all those things I just mentioned, construction, currently I estimate a total project cost of somewhere around 13.2 million. So, we budgeted 14.75, so a million and a half, which is also one of the free.
Will you repeat that, please? Well, his mic didn't work. We're on a million and a half on our budget. That's important to note, please. And I appreciate y'all. I'm not making out of it. I appreciate the hard work. I know a lot of work has gone into that with our folks, Steel and Freeman, and I really appreciate us really punching that hard.
Yeah, that's, I don't reiterate, Doug said, you agree to work together as a team to kind of every cost-saving measure we can make, you post, you business submitted to Steel Freeman's construction. The Subset recommendation, I need your recommendation. We were able to pick up and just make sure the thousand dollars, some other recommendations. So, it's been a very good group effort for actually.
Back to you, Chief. Any questions?
We'll entertain any questions.
Questions for the overall, big picture before we get into details? Councilmember Copeland?
For Dolph, so if we actually do come in under budget, then what will, what will happen to that extra money?
Well, both after taking your bond issue, it was for the fire station project and the street project, it's used for transportation projects. So, that'll be a council decision on where that goes, and we've got some ideas. We think maybe the intersection at Knowles and Bailey-Boswell, getting that signal put in there, we've got the town on it already, and so we're going to have construction. Well, this could go towards that signal, with the bridge being completed in order than we think, or thought it would be, because of the issue, you may want to set it the way that the funding is set, and the network starts, and the bridge will possess it. Those are the types of things that y'all have now in options on, because it's saying we're saying it's a problem.
Okay, thanks.
Council, other questions?
I have no questions. I do have a comment.
Sure.
I've had the opportunity to sit down with Chief and Steel Freeman, and did go through the guaranteed maximum price. I feel confident that the team has worked very diligently to make sure that they have what they need to meet these very demanding times in terms of price increases. Steel Freeman has taken on some risks. As the city has leveraged just about everything that they can into this deal, I think it's a good deal all the way around. So I just want you guys to hear that from me, that I did have some insight into that, and I appreciate the hard work from all of you.
So, we explain, or maybe Brinkin explained, so in this contract, let's say, we end up a little bit over this. What happens then? This is a guaranteed maximum agreement. If we end up over 11.3, what does that mean legally?
Legally means it would require additional approval of council in order to exceed the maximum.
Okay. And what would we do? How would we do that? Or how would that proceed? And I'm looking to Dolph and the Chief to answer that. What would we, what steps would we take at that point? And this is hypothetical, I know.
Well, hopefully, we're going to know if we're going to have a cost overrun early. There is contingencies built in there to handle some smaller cost overruns. There's a 2% contingency built in there, which at the end, if we don't utilize that, we'll get that money back to the city. But that is to cover some cost overruns. I can't imagine a scenario where we get beyond that. That would have to be something really substantial. We would have that conversation earlier, early, again, with the architects and Steel Freeman, and figure out how to, to address that.
Okay.
The emphasis is going to be on Steel Freeman, and I can tell you that, to build it for the price they brought forward.
Okay. All right, do we want to hear from our Steel and Freeman friends right now? Any other questions for staff? Maybe?
We just want to hear from Scott, and he needs to say there will be no change orders at all.
Please introduce yourself, just so.
I'm Scott DePaul. I'm Vice President, Operations for Steel and Freeman. Really appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this project as Steel and Freeman. Me personally, I'm personally tied to the fire service, and my father was a lifelong firefighter, so any chance we have that opportunity to be a part of the community and those improvements, it's always an honor. So, we sincerely appreciate the partnership and the teamwork that has gone into the budgeting and now the GMP of this project, so thank you.
You overlooked one detail. You're a Saginaw's own contractor.
Here, here. Any questions for our Steel and Freeman friends? Yep.
I said one, fucker, but you're on the spot.
Yes, sir.
You'll recall, we advanced this project through COs, which was a big decision for the city council. If we had brought this to voters and voters had heard, and we're looking at design now, maybe a year from now, you have a ballpark estimate of the cost now, and what a year from now would look like based on the market, if you could just kind of share.
I know what we're seeing in the market as of right now, as far as, you know, steel, just raw steel products, from what we've seen over the last three to four months is almost a 10% increase in the raw materials every 30 days. So we got notifications on April 1 with a 10% increase, May 1 with another 10%, and they're predicting another one on June 1. So the quicker we can get the buyout done, the better opportunity we have to secure and make sure that we don't incur those price increases. Concrete has gone up, I think, 10 to 15%, and we really don't know what's going to happen with, you know, there's a shortage of the fly ash and the cement, which is driving that cost up. You know, we're hopeful it'll start to recover over the next three or four months, but as far as the pricing, I don't anticipate that coming down. So with the steel, resins that make the PVC are drastically going up. Plywood, wood products have just gone through the roof, so, you know, I can't put a percentage on it, but I do know that, you know, historically, we've looked at about a half a percent per month of inflation, and I think right now, projections show that we're going to exceed that. So had we waited to bid it out now, or wait for a bond to be approved and go through that scenario, I think there's a likelihood that it would be considerably more expensive.
All right. So we made a good decision last year. I appreciate it. Any other questions for our Steel and Freeman friends? I appreciate your willingness to work with us. I know y'all done a lot of work so far. It's been good work, and I look forward to the future and getting this thing going. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the GMP amendment as presented. I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, there is some alternate language spoke to earlier.
Okay.
Very simple. Approve the document as presented with omitting language in Exhibit D, Division 1, number 17.
Accurate. Maybe I'll let Brandon clarify. What was the clause? What's the clause number? It's Division 1, number 17. Exhibit D, Division 1, number 17. Okay. Exhibit D, Division 1. Number 17. Number 17. Yes, sir. Okay, so. To be struck from the agreement. To be struck from the agreement, so we had. I think it directs where funds would be spent in the event of an unforeseen condition, and it allows for the use of a change order to be brought forward, but the architect would have to determine whether or not that change order would be warranted. If the architect determines that the issue was reasonably inferrable, it would not be brought forward, anyway. Sorry. That's exactly accurate.
All right, so now, Mr. Far, you want to restate your motion?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the GMP amendment with, exact. Exhibit D. Striking Exhibit D, Division 1. Division 1, number 17. From the agreement.
Have a second? Mayor pro-10 seconds. Everybody clear on that? Everybody good? All of the favor, raise your right hand, please. All opposed? Excellent. Thanks, guys. Good luck. Let's go. Giddy up.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Steel and Freeman. Appreciate it.
Y'all take care.
And Chief? Chief, thank you very much. I know your hard work, Chief Spears. We appreciate it. You too, as well, Dolph. I'm moving forward, item number eight, updated intersection analysis of Basswood and Hockey Trail. For that, our friends at Kenny Horn. Trenton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you've got Mr. Trenton Tedwell, a fan of you, to present, and then also in the audience is Pete Kelly, who actually did the analysis. Should there be any additional questions?
Welcome, Trenton. Good to see you.
Yes, and then we have Pete back here. If y'all start to grill me, I'm going to lean on him for a little bit of help. So we were tasked with looking at Basswood Boulevard and a couple of intersections, so we're just going to walk you through our results on that. So the study area is Basswood, like I said, which connects Bailey-Boswell to FM 156. We're mainly focused on the southern or east portion of that, starting at High Country Trail, and then it also includes Grand Central Parkway. So the purpose that prompted this was the inside lanes closer to the median, where the large trees are, is experiencing some pavement failure and joint failure, and so city staff recommended that we meet on site to take a look at what's causing that, and recommended us in evaluating if we could remove those lanes, how it would affect the corridor capacity. We've also got some complaints from citizens and staff observations that people are not compliant for the four-way stops at High Country Trail and Grand Central Parkway, and we wanted to evaluate what it would look like removing those two lanes, and then other intersection control for those intersections. So like I said, the scope is broken down into two buckets, and that's going to be the corridor and the intersections, and I'll walk you through our results on that. So the existing conditions for the corridor was 12,000 vehicles per day for the northern stretch, which is between the two intersections, and then almost 17,000 vehicles per day for the southern stretch closer to FM 156. And the way we broke this down was, the northern section, when we analyzed it going from six lanes to four lanes, we're only using about 25% of the capacity in the PM peak hour, so that actually leaves 72% if we were to reduce that to four lanes. So that's still quite a, quite a bit of percentage that's available if you were to reduce that. And then for the southern section, south of Grand Central Parkway, during the PM peak, we would only be utilizing about 40% of that capacity if it were a four-lane corridor, leaving about 60% available for growth, or that wouldn't be utilized. So looking a little closer at the intersections, we compared three options. It's actually four options, and those are the six lanes with the always stops, which is the current configuration, four lanes with the always stops that are out there currently, and then four lanes with roundabouts at the two intersections. And then we actually took a look at the traffic signal warrants for those two intersections, but they did not meet the warrants based on the vehicular traffic, so those aren't considered in this analysis. So currently, the level of service, which is a measurement of the delay, and it's like grade schools, grades in school, which goes from A to F, A is obviously better, they're currently at a level of service C, which is not terrible, but there's obviously room for improvement there. If you were to reduce the lanes to four lanes, that level of service decreases at Grand Central Parkway to a level of service D, meaning that the delay at that intersection would increase during the peak hour. If you were to improve the two intersections to roundabouts, and these would be hybrid roundabouts, would be two-lane in the north and south direction, but one lane on the side streets, that level of service would be A, which is obviously the best you can get. And then, once again, these measure the PM, or the peak hours, but during the daytime, the level of service is also, is also really great for roundabouts because the delay is non-existent. So in summary, we would be comfortable recommending the reduction from a six-lane to a four-lane based on the fact that 60% capacity would still remain if you were to make that reduction. And then obviously, with the significant decrease in delay, roundabouts would be recommended if you wanted to improve those intersections moving forward. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Questions for our engineering friends? Councilmember Big Horse?
So why would we, I don't understand why we would want to spend money to reduce a roadway from six lanes to four lanes.
So I don't think it was, it was prompted by the failing pavement and the, I think, when Rick, I actually didn't meet up there with Rick, but I did tour the site myself. It looked like there's some large joint gaps in between those two lanes because of the trees or maybe construction methods.
Which two lanes?
So the inside lane, which is adjacent to the median, and then the other lanes. So the inside lane, which is adjacent to the median, and then the other lanes, the other, their lanes.
So it's the inside lanes that are failing?
Yes, ma'am. There's a large gap in there as well, so as water continues to seep down into those gaps, it's going to heave the pavement even more, and then that grade difference will keep, continue to increase.
So are you just talking about taking out those two lanes and making a wider median or something, and then leaving the existing lanes there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, we, obviously, if you wanted to replace the lanes, you could do that as well. I think we're just providing the analysis to make, if you wanted to save money and not replace the lanes and just take it out, that could be, that's something what we would recommend based on the capacity.
So would it be better just to, you don't think repairing those lanes is a feasible option?
We could look into that, and did you have discussions with CMJ about this as well?
I have not. I have not seen any reports, but I would say, you know, there's two components to what he's presented here tonight, and one's the capacity of the lanes themselves, the other one is the intersection capacity. If you look at the capacity of two lanes versus the three, we're saying that it's really a moot point. I mean, we could remove those pavements rather than rebuild, which would require removal and replacement, so that's the lane capacity. The other one's the intersection capacity that they've looked at, so that's why there's two recommendations really, if you want to look at it that way. One is to, is to remove and replace the inside lanes, which were shown to really not be needed, that we have sufficient excess capacity in the future to serve that, and then the second is the functions of those two intersections.
Why was it determined that we needed three lanes in the first place?
You know, the, this is another one of those VRs before Rick's, but...
But I'm going to hold you accountable.
But Rick would have probably done the same thing. I mean, the rule of thumb in the old days was, you know, that an arterial would be a three-lane or six-lane divided, and so that was pretty common. You see that, you know, all over the region, all over the metroplex. You know, so this has gone into more detail from a traffic engineering perspective, which is justifying, you know, the reduction in the lane.
Mr. Mayor, I'll speak to the roundabout intersection, so if you recall, you were there, we had a grad gap with the Basswood Crossing. The neighbors had a lot of concerns about traffic safety, and that happened to be my neighborhood, so I'm working with that intersection of High Country and Basswood, those stop signs do nothing. We could go out there and put a camera and people crawl through it. You'd have school traffic there in the morning that it didn't warrant a signal, so I don't think even if we wanted to, we could put a signal, is that correct?
Right. I mean, based on the vehicle data, we wouldn't recommend a signal there because there wouldn't be enough vehicular traffic, right?
So what I'm happy to do, to bring back to the neighborhood is present this information, and I'm confident, I know there's a lot of emotion regarding roundabouts, I'm aware, but I think you'd have the support of the neighbors because that intersection, given the kids walking in school, is not safe. And again, personally, those are my kids walking in school, and I see people keeping with a crossing guard in the evening, both your, those stop signs do nothing. So we're happy to bring that to the neighborhood, if they're included and brought back to you, so...
You know, one question I have, are you done, Cindy? I don't want to interrupt you. If, let's say we go from six lane to four lane, will that help with traffic, with the intersection? Will that, because you're reducing numbers of lanes, will that slow people down? Will that, what have we seen? Will that help with anything with this intersection and the speed along there?
We didn't analyze that, but I would imagine if you reduce the lane widths out there, that, or not the lane widths, but the number of lanes, that you would feel a little tighter through that corridor and it would slow. Additionally, at the cross-section or at the intersections, that would reduce the crossing width, even if you didn't keep the stop-controlled intersection, so that always helps.
You know, it is a very wide, I mean, I walk there a lot, and it is a huge, it's a long way to go, and I think I'm pretty quick, but it's a long trip across there and you are exposed. But the question is, you know, why can't we do a light? Would a light be any good? Would a light help? If we determine that a four-way stop is not effective, I think we determine that, would a light help, whether it's warranted or not, would it help? Would a roundabout help? What would be the, A, the safest procedure, and then, and also would this, going from six to four, would that help as well? I guess the questions I have, and do we have...
Yeah, I don't think we asked him to want to look at a signal. I think we probably could do a separate analysis because it didn't warrant, but that's our next one.
Yeah, and if we did take a look at that, another thing I think I'd like to add is, with all the pedestrian traffic, especially at the High Country, I know there's a school further south as well, so I think we should gather pedestrian counts at Grand Central, because there are warrants that you can meet for signals solely based off of the pedestrian traffic. Now, when you mix that with low volumes with a signal, you still want to pay very close attention to how those interact, but we can take a closer look at that as well.
The question I have, because on High Country Trail, there's not one, there's two schools, and it's a middle and an elementary. You know, farther down Basswood is a high school, which is a little different traffic-wise because you've got more students driving, but the High Country Trail is the one that concerns me just from the input of the residents and also what I've seen, because you have a lot of kids, and I drive there going to work, you have a lot of kids walking across there, taking their bikes across, and the traffic, the crossing guard, they're early, but they're gone at a certain time, and the middle school kids are still going across, and it is a huge, it's a long, I wish I knew how much, how far across that is, it's a very long intersection to get across. So the, I think we need to take a better, a deeper dive in this to see if we want, what we can do to make it safer, and if it's reducing lanes, if it's adding roundabouts, adding a light, something, I think we take maybe multiple steps at this.
Okay.
So what...
James Haseman.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Pete Kelly with Kenny Horn. I just want to also add to your question about the traffic speeds. We do see, when you reduce the overall width, that there is a traffic calming effect. You'd probably get even more return for investment with the roundabouts because they're a natural traffic calming feature. With a traffic signal, you do get the stopping of traffic so that you can have pedestrian phases, so pedestrians can cross, so that does add safety. However, with the roundabout, your turning speed is typically about 20 miles per hour or less, which has been shown in studies. There are far fewer fatal accidents at 20 miles per hour, so those would add the natural traffic calming and reduce speeds generally along the corridor. But as we said, we can look further into that as well.
Go ahead.
Kids cross out there?
Tons of kids.
No kids got themselves?
Yeah, High Country Trail, tons of kids, yeah.
Yeah, so we have a, we have a crossing guard, PD has a crossing guard in the morning and the afternoon for an hour each, and that would continue regardless, we'll give it to you. I mean, again, it's personal to me, but it's a tough intersection, and we need some attention.
Charlie, do you have a question? Mr. Tucker?
I missed something somewhere. How is reducing the number of lanes going to slow people down? If they're not going to stop at a stop sign, then what makes you think they're going to stop at a red light?
Right.
I have three stop signs right in front of my house, and they just blow through them like they're not there. I told the chief not too long ago, they're broke. Would somebody run over them? No, they don't stop!
Yeah, that is always a risk, and so that's what Pete was talking to about the speeds, with the lower speeds, if even someone is traveling through, which, I know y'all, we're all roundabout experts at this point.
Yeah, that's what I was laughing about. Everyone on this dais has a postgraduate degree right now in roundabouts.
Yeah, Pete is preaching to the choir right now. So if someone blows through a traffic signal, you're right, they're going 40 miles an hour. If someone blows through a roundabout, they're going 15 miles an hour, so that is something to consider.
And is this, I'm sorry, is this where they race also, that they're talking about their running of stop signs and racing? Is this the same area?
I mean, it's...
One of.
It's closer to 156, but Basswood, because there's capacity, there's a lot of traffic now. That is, and we talk about this in our neighborhood, that has been amplified because 156 is under construction, Western Center is out of commission, so you have more cut through traffic, and we'll be in this situation for a while until 156 is completed. But yeah, it's a wide open. I'll make it a tea, y'all come to my house, we'll go watch, and it's...
It's a beautiful street, it really is. Basswood's a beautiful street. We have a police officer there a lot of the time. I don't, Chief could probably tell us how much, but there's somebody on Basswood all the time, and they have a lot of business, they pull people over all the time. At the Grad's Gap, I said this, my son got a ticket there, so they get lots of tickets out there, we do a lot of business there, but cause people drive fast, so, you know...
And that was one of the questions I have.
Yeah, go ahead, Cindy.
Talking about, you know, the traffic tickets and pullovers and things, does that calculate into the equation for justifying a traffic light? Or...
I don't think I understand the question.
Well, I mean, the fact that, you know, we have X number of citations at that intersection, because you said what, there's not enough traffic to warrant a traffic light at that intersection?
Right.
You know, can you calculate or figure in the number of citations or stops by our police officers?
Gotcha.
Into that calculation to warrant getting a traffic signal there? Because like Charlie said, you know, I think the letter P is missing off a stop, you know, and it, or maybe people just don't know how to read anymore. You know, I don't know.
Yeah, and I can give Pete and his team, I know that, I think, relying on my school information, which I think there's 12 warrants for traffic signals, but we can take a deeper dive into those, I believe there's like crash statistics that they claim about as well, so...
Yeah, I'm not aware of a traffic signal warrant based on citations. There is a warrant based off of crashes that have occurred, this is the safety warrant, so it's, if five crashes have occurred in a 12-year, 12-month period or more within a given distance of an intersection, that would warrant a traffic signal.
I would much rather base it, as a mom, I would much rather base it off of citations because that means somebody probably survived.
What we do sometimes is we do speed studies to see what the speed is compared to the posted speed limit, and there's also a, there's a speed factor to this in warrants as well, if that would be considered something that could improve speeding.
What about spike strips?
Do we need to have a certain capacity to justify roundabouts? Is that different than a light, a signal?
Right, there's no warrant for a roundabout. I think signal, you're just worried about people blowing through it when there's not enough traffic.
So what if these were reduced to single lane? What would happen to the A, would that drop to a B?
Single lane in all four directions. Pete actually did run that.
The only reason I say that is because if you do have a high volume of pedestrian traffic crossing, national folks that came in here and talked to us recommended against double-lane roundabouts with pedestrian crossings.
And if these are kids, I think that's not really important.
Is your question, Councilmember, is it about just single-lane roundabout, but it would still be a two-lane roadway, so merging...
Two-lane roadway, yeah.
The, we did run the analysis for a single-lane roundabout, it would be level of service B or better with a single lane.
So that's better than any always stop at any intersection, and you drop it down to a single lane, which, by the way, the merging of that traffic is going to be way more than a traffic calming situation. It is going to be certainly a traffic slowing situation, because people are going to have to merge. And I think making that single lane creates opportunities to really slow that curve speed down in the intersection, especially if we have the opportunity to put in raised walks or a speed table entering that roundabout, something along those lines. I, again, this, we have talked more about roundabouts in the last two years than I, than I ever thought we would ever speak about, but it seems to me that if we're beginning to talk about pedestrians again, and a roundabout, I can't even hear the word "two-lane roundabout" in pedestrians right now. So just, if it's a, if it's a service level B or better with a single lane, it sounds like this is kind of the best of all worlds here. We're beating all of the always-stop numbers, which I think I saw C and D.
D, yeah.
Right? Here we see A, which is wonderful for, for the traffic itself, but in my mind, it's not best for the pedestrian.
Right, with the two lanes remaining on Basswood.
Yeah. I think the shorter distance, when you're only having to cross 17 feet to get to a median, and then you've got that harbor point right there before you have to jump another 17 feet, you're given the advantage to the pedestrian at that point. So instead of two lanes, we're still at 22, 20, actually, 32 to 36 feet, right?
Probably around 26 feet.
26 feet from curb to curb?
On one lane, yep, it'll be 13-foot lanes.
Okay, okay, so...
It could be wider, but that's about what we would do.
So you're still having to cross a significant amount of pavement more with the two lanes before you get to a safe harbor. So I think the idea is you shrink the amount of time you have to take steps in traffic, and then you're out of traffic. That's the reason the single lane is more advantageous for the pedestrian.
Yeah, and I think we can take a deeper dive into this, take a look at those pedestrian movements, and then I'll double-check, I don't believe we had pedestrian counts for Grand Central Parkway, but if we don't, maybe we can gather those before school's out, just to make sure we agree with that as well. Because perhaps if they're significantly lower, we could keep that at two by one, but then take a closer look at High Country and those pedestrian counts, and if a one by one would make more sense.
Yes, I think we've got some action items. Councilmember Copeland?
I know we're not making any decisions tonight, but I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding the concept, which I believe, right now, we have a level of service C with the, with the six lanes?
Yes, ma'am.
But if we reduced it to four lanes in conjunction with the roundabout one or two lanes, it would raise it to a B or an A?
Yes, ma'am.
With those two things being done in conjunction with each other?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
One final comment about removing the lane, the inside lanes. So as I'm understanding it, first off, just remind me, how old is this roadway at this point? This is not the new extension that was built in the last three years. This is the old extension that's probably 15, 18 years old now?
Probably.
Somewhere in that range?
No, High Country Trail, that stop is new. That one, that's a new one.
I think from there, Nora.
Yeah.
About years ago.
Okay.
So it's at least 30 years old, and you've got a 30-year-old line, and you're going to proceed.
Yes. So, so you mentioned CMJ earlier, that, have they done testing of the soils there? We know what's going on with, with that material? In other words, if we remove the center lanes, and all we're doing is creating the opportunity for moisture to enter closer to the next lane, is that not going to introduce the same failure to that inside lane sooner?
Right. We could take a closer look. I know we had a proposal from CMJ, I believe Dana told me their gut feel was it was the proximity to the trees that they were more concerned about.
Okay, not expansive soil.
Lack of a root barrier, right.
Got it. Okay, so the roots obviously probably will not extend out that additional 17 feet.
It would, it would still be expansive soils, but the roots is causing the movement in the soil, so...
Well, there goes my idea of a canal, like Amsterdam, down the middle.
All right, I think we've got some action items for Kenny Horn, go back and come, report back at some point in the future, so... Everybody good?
And, yes, and then we'll work with them and Saff, represent this to the citizens if they would like to, so...
After this additional analysis, let's talk to the citizens as well, so, great. Thank you, thank you, Brandon. Appreciate the information, really do. This is good. Item number nine, at 7:29, we recess into workshop. Item 10, physical year 2021, 22 budget workshop, for that, Kim Quinn, Finance Director.
Since my microphone's not working, I'll make my presentation from here. So this next budget workshop is going to take a look at where we are now before we start working on... on next fiscal year. So we're going to go fund by fund and each of the slides, I have a slide for each fund and each of the slides are formatted in the same manner. So instead of giving you columns of numbers, I'm trying to be, give you an idea of what, where we're at, at just a glance. So that's why I've changed to graphs here. And so for, you'll see there's a set of bars for revenues and a set of bars for expenditures. The blue one represents the adopted budget level. The red one is the modified budget level, the revisions that we made in March, that y'all made in March. The green is the year to date, either revenues or expenditures, and the purple is the best estimate they, that we have at this point on where we'll end up with revenues or expenditures. All of these year to date numbers are through March. We don't have April, April numbers available yet. So general fund, the big picture is we're looking good sales tax wise. We're still at 2% year to date. We have some revenues that are down. We've got our fines and fees that are down year to date and recreation fees obviously are down. Those are down 89% because our rec center hasn't been able to be open. On the positive side, our building permits and construction inspection fees, we budgeted them to be down, but they're not down as much as we thought they would be. So we've got some, we've got trending higher than budgeted in those types of fees. So overall, general fund is looking pretty good. Now you'll notice that the revenue lines are lower than the expenditure lines and that's because we, the adopted budget was, did include a drawdown of fund balance, 2.9 fund balance drawdown in the general fund. The majority of that, 2.6 of that was for the bridge, the overpass at Bailey Boswell Bridge. And then we modified the budget further. So the budgeted drawdown was raised to 3.7 million. So that's the amount that we anticipate drawing down general fund balance by the end of the year. The big item there was the land purchase at the park. So overall, with all of the pluses and minuses, I anticipate the drawdown of general fund to be slightly less than the 3.7 million that's budgeted. I think we'll be closer to 3.5. Again, though, these are just estimates. We're just a little over halfway through the year, so they might change. Hopefully, sales tax will stay strong. We've had a month where it's been down, a couple of months here and there, but overall, we're looking pretty good in the general fund. So in the, the next fund is the debt service fund. The majority, the major, mostly all of the revenue source here is property tax. We also have some interest earnings. And this is the fund where we pay for the principal and interest on our debt. So we issue bonds and certificates of obligation. We collect money in this fund from property tax and this is where we pay that. We'll, we budgeted a drawdown of 209,000. If you recall during the time that we were issuing debt, we said we were going to do that to try to even out the tax rate, the debt service part of the tax rate. So we anticipated a drawdown. The budgeted drawdown was 209,000. I think we'll be a little bit over that. It's going to be more like 227,000 and that's just because we aren't earning interest at the rate that we thought we would. Interest rates are down. But overall, in this fund, we should be fine also. We should have enough in ending fund balance to continue our plan to draw down over the next few years to keep the tax rate for existing debt at the same level. Additional debt will require a tax rate increase. On the enterprise fund, this is the water and wastewater fund, water and sewer fund. These main revenues here are the water and sewer fees that we pay every month with our, on our water bill. And then we have some industrial customers that pay a wastewater surcharge fee. The major expenses in this fund are the water that we purchase from the city of Fort Worth and we also pay for them to treat our wastewater. We budgeted in this fund, a budgeted drawdown of 211,000. Those were for some one-time items and some capital projects. This fund is more volatile than some of the other funds because it's so dependent on our weather. So it's, at this point, it's kind of early to make these estimates, but I think overall we'll be pretty good. I think that if anything, we may not have to draw down as much as we anticipated, as much as we have budgeted so far. Sewer fees are up and depending on what the weather is this summer, we may have, it'll depend on if we have a dry summer or a wet summer and how much people water, frankly. The next fund is the enterprise escrow fund. This is where we collect our water impact fees. If you recall, y'all, we've stopped collecting impact fees, but we do have projects that are eligible that we're spending the impact fees on. So that's why you'll see the bars for the revenue are very, very low, but you've got the expense bars high and that's because we're using the fees that have been collected previously for impact fee eligible projects. And the two that are budgeted this year are the Saginaw Boulevard 16 inch water line and the Northwest Booster Pump. We've got two more projects, or yeah, two more projects that are eligible to use the remaining water impact fees that we have in that fund balance. CCPD, Crime Control and Prevention District Fund. The funding source here is 3 eighths of a cent sales tax. Sales tax, just like in the general fund, are up.
Kim, when was, I don't know, you know, when was that last authorized?
The CCPD?
The voters? Do we remember?
I don't. That wasn't, the, the street one was the one that was just.
We just did street last year, but when was CCP, when is CCP up again?
It's been, it's been a few years ago, so it's not anytime soon.
No, it was two years ago.
We did the, okay. How, how long was it for?
It's been for 10 years.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we're not due for at least six or seven. Where was I? So our budget, our original budgeted use of fund balance was about 54,000, but because of the good collections and sales tax, I don't think at this point that we'll be using that much from fund balance as we thought. And the drainage utility fund, this is the fund where you pay, we pay a drainage utility fee in our monthly, our monthly bill. An average residential is $5. This, again, is a fund where we have collected money in the past and we are spending it on projects. So we're drawing down fund balance. The original budgeted fund balance, budgeted use of fund balance is about $924,000 and we anticipate that that will happen this year. The big projects that we're working on is the construction of the East Cement Creek Drainage Project, Phase Two, and then they're going to finish engineering on Phase Three. So that's why you see the revenue bars lower than the expense bars because we're using, we're spending money that has been collected over a period of time. In the street maintenance fund, this is the other fund that is partially funded with sales tax revenue. An eighth of a cent goes to street maintenance fund every month, or I mean, yeah, well, every month. Again, the revenue bars are lower than the expense bars because we're spending money that has been collected over a period of time. The budgeted use of fund balance was 263,000. The estimated use of fund balance is closer to 600,000. The change here is that we had, we're, we used funding from street maintenance fund for the McElroy curb and gutter project and the repaving, and then also a portion of it for the Willow Creek parking.
Mr. Mayor, this one, I think we might look at, with some of the savings in the, from the fire station budget, we may look at East McElroy. If we recall, we reconstrued a pretty significant portion, the approaches, which, again, my personal hat, that's my ride home, so that's basic as soon as possible. Approaches of the railroad crossing, which you might look at this year or coming, but we could tackle that.
Okay. Next fund is the donations fund. As you mentioned, Councilmember Copeland, this is where donations, the majority, we, we collect all donations in this fund, but the majority of the funding is the dollar or up to $3 that a lot of, in fact, I looked at the percentages and I'm really proud of this fact. 85% of our customers contribute a dollar for beautification and for parks and library, 83%. So I think that's really a great statement that, that many, that high of a percentage of people make that monthly donation for beautification, parks and library. This is where those donations go and then they're spent accordingly. We had a budgeted, we did not anticipate spending all that we collected, but there have been some adjustments this year. So we probably will spend most of what we've collected. The items that were added in the library was for an intern. And then on parks, we've added, the parks, parks donations is funding the master plan. That was originally budgeted in general fund, but the Parks Board agreed to pay for the Parks Master Plan here. The other portion of the Willow Creek Park, parking and lighting is being funded out of parks donations as well as the stage for the switch yard.
So did you say?
The library fees were going for an intern?
Part of the library is.
I mean, not donations.
Yes, the donations. And then there's also the regular library expenditures that are paid out of here. They pay for software licenses, some books. The summer program, the special fees required for special programs, the summer programs are paid out of donations as well in the library donations.
Thank you.
Last fund is general escrow fund. This is kind of a catch-all fund. So fees that we collect and special revenues that are supposed to be accounted for separately for special purposes are, are accounted for in this fund. The big changes that we see here, you'll see that our estimates are quite a bit higher than what we have budgeted. So the big things that have happened this year is we've had two PID escrows, right? We had the PID for Western Center as well as Belt Mill. So this is where we're accounting for those. We have the $50,000 revenue and then expenses related to the creation of, of the PID are here. And if we don't spend them all, then we refund the remaining amount of the escrow, which we've already done for the first Western Center PID. And then the other thing that you see here is some development fees for North Old Decatur Road, the Golden Chick. And there was one other business that has deposited fees for future improvement of North Old Decatur. It might have been the stores.
The storage facility.
Yeah. And then the other escrow that we've got here is the median cut for the development at Bailey Boswell and Blue Mountain Road. That's, that was about over $92,000. So that's kind of where we're at in these funds. Overall, we're looking pretty good. I think that we should be happy that we've fared as well as we have with everything, the pandemic and all of the other things that have gone on. We're in a, we're in a good situation for the most part. The last slide I have is, last time we talked about having the option of using the de minimis tax rate. And I apologize, but I did some more research after I put this slide together and the dates have changed a little bit. There's some discrepancy between the election code and the tax code. And I think that what we need to do is go with the election code, which requires 78 days versus the 71 days to approve the tax rate if we're going with the de minimis rate. So what that's going to mean to us if we do intend to do that is that we would have to have a special council meeting. The latest we could do that would be Monday, August 16th. It says the 23rd up there, but it's really the 16th, to have our hearing and adopt the budget and the tax rate. We would have to then move our council budget retreat to the Saturday before that. That would be a week before what our current calendar is showing. That would push back the notice, the publication notices. And the, kind of the weird thing that would happen here is we would have to print our proposed budget and distribute it on July 16th, which is before we actually get our certified values from TAD. So what we could do in that case is we would present a proposed budget, but we wouldn't have our final tax rate calculations. We could do estimates. And then by the time we come around to the beginning of August, and it would be your first council meeting in August, I could present the actual tax rate, tax rates. And then when we approved the final budget, if you decided to go with the de minimis tax rate, the de minimis could be approved at that point. But the proposed budget would not.
That point being the first meeting in August?
The first meeting in August, I would have the tax rate calculations for you. Normally, when you are presented with a proposed budget, you have all those final tax rate calculations because we receive our certified values on the 25th. This year, we'll probably get them on the 26th because the 25th is a Sunday. TAD said they would try to get the to us on Friday, but most likely we'll get them on the 26th. So the difference here, the difference here is that the proposed budget would not have the definite tax rate calculations. It would just be estimates, but you would have them by August, the first meeting in August. In time to contemplate for the.
And the budget retreat as, so being the 21st, it would be the 14th?
The budget retreat would be the Saturday before that, yes.
It would be the 14th for budget retreat, if, if we do de minimis, okay.
If you do want to, if you entertain the de minimis.
Gotcha. Okay. Now, what, at what point do we need to make a decision on the, which route we're going?
You would have until like July, when we would have to really just, I mean, you, you obviously, I would say mid-July would be the time that we would need to know to make sure we have everything ready for you to make decisions.
Okay, so we've got, we do have a little bit of time?
We do have time.
She said, she said just mid-July, I guess.
And with the passage of the bond propositions too, we're, depending on the timing of the projects, we're thinking that we would probably have a bond sale sometime, I'm hoping earlier towards the summer. If y'all want to start on the engineering and, and planning for the library and the senior center, and then possibly, depending on, depending on what the county proposes, possibly construction of the road.
So, and Mr. Mayor, we'll come back quickly to the next meeting and talk about bond projects. We should know by, is it July with the county? September, what our county participation would be on the street projects?
Really? Okay.
So, so we'll know what the county bond is in November. You know, as soon as we can get our facilities to design and possess that much closer to construction. So that, we're planning the preparations now and we'll bring them to you as a workshop item.
Yeah, if we, if we do a summer, mid, early to midsummer, then we would have the tax, we, that would be included in next year's tax rate.
Any questions for Kim? And this is beta formation. Kim, thank you very much. Questions? Councilmember Copeland?
Will we have enough information to be able to make an informed decision about whether or not to use the de minimis tax rate time-wise? I mean, will we have enough information to be able to make a good decision about that?
Yes, we will. We'll have our. Yes, we will. We'll have our, we'll have our cost estimates and the options that you can choose from. And we'll have pretty good estimates value-wise. So by mid-July, we'll have an idea if that's really something that we think we might need to entertain. And I'll have good tax rate estimates. We got our first set of estimates, the April estimates, last, end of last week. And we're up eleven percent so far overall values, but you really can't put too much stock in the April numbers because there are no protests or anything included yet. But it's a good place to start.
Council, other questions for Kim? Excellent info. Thank you very much, Kim. Thanks for staying on top of this. As always, Council, if you have any budget questions, Kim is always available and happy to top budget. So please contact her. And citizens as well, if you have budget questions, please contact Gabe or Kim and we're happy to top budget. Kim will top budget around the clock if we'd let her. All right. Moving forward, we are at seven fifty-one. We convene back into regular session at seven fifty-one. We also recuse into executive session pursuant to Texas government code five-five-one dot oh-eight-seven, the legislation regarding economic development negotiations. We will return to adjournment.